Call the meeting to order.
It's 7:06, so just sit down.
We are gathered here at this special meeting for two board of member vacancies. In no special order. I have four resumes in front of me, one of them alphabet with the A. Steve? All yours, sir. You're all ours.
Just real quick, can you please state your name before you start?
Sure, my name is Stephen Adams. I live at Leighton Brickyard over in Woodstock. I have some resumes in case anybody would like some.
Sure.
Steve, tell us about yourself? Sure. Chairman, I've been a 14-year resident in the town of Woodstock. I became aware of the two vacancies on the Board of Education. Advocating for kids and children has been a long-time passion of mine. Starting at home with three kids of my own as a single parent. They've all gone through the Woodstock public schools. My last one is graduating this year from this school, Angel School. They've all done very well in these schools. Very proud of them. In my practice, I also serve as an advocate for children on a regular basis. Representing children in all different children's matters. And then, as far as my community service, I've also served, I was a founding member of the Education Foundation in this community. I also served on the Board of Education in a faraway town called Fairfield about 25 years ago. So it's really been a passion of mine for a long time. And I wanted to bring my skill sets to this board to be able to continue along those lines. I was concerned that with two vacancies at the same time, there might be difficulty in finding some good candidates. But I'm very pleased to say that sitting on either side of my, maybe we've got some fabulous candidates here also. I'm very happy to see that, that the board has choices. And I'd like to offer myself as a choice to the board. On behalf of the answer any questions that you have. Anyone on the board, questions for Stephen?
I have a question, Steve.
Sure.
Why, why now and not two Novembers ago? Or a year ago November?
I'm very honest, Cliff, I've been, I've been waiting for my children to pass through the system. I thought that I had had perspective with my children in the system, but I did not necessarily want to serve while they were still in the system. And that's based upon experiences that I had seen in other communities. I thought that now is the right time.
Do you then believe that the board should be made up of non-parents? Nine non-parents?
No, not at all. No, and I'm a parent.
Well, parents of kids in the system.
In the system, yeah. I've got, I've got plenty of 30 years of experience in the system with three children that started out the pre-K program. All as lottery picks. And very fortunate to have gone through that pre-K program all the way through eighth grade. So I think I've got, got some pretty good knowledge of how the system works.
Sure, what skills and experience do you bring to the table that you think make you an exceptional candidate for this position?
Kevin, I, one of the things that I think that I'm pretty good at with different boards and entities that I serve on is bringing about a consensus. And finding common ground amongst different views. And also being able to take a fresh look at things. I think that we're going to be, this board is going to need some creative solutions, as all boards do, but especially in times of dwindling funding. And I think that knowing that what's going to, what's taking place on a national and a statewide level in trying to solve those fiscal problems are eventually going to trickle down to this board. And I hate to see that happen, I recognize that you've got to make, do the best with what's allocated to you from the Board of Finance and from the voters of the town. I'm confident that I would be able to bring those skills to the board.
Thank you.
We've talked, interviewed a couple of times, so I'm pretty set. That'll be all, I think we'll move on to the next, which is Angela, if you're next, you're up.
Hi, my name is Angela Shamber, I've been a resident in Woodstock for over eight years now. I have worked primarily in healthcare, I am an advanced practice registered nurse. I've started out going through, when I was in school, actually more in acute care settings. And when I graduated and I passed my boards and all of that, I moved on to geriatrics, specifically geriatrics psychiatry. That's where my focus started. My primary focus is in geriatrics, the under end of the spectrum. And I moved from the long-term care to the living settings doing that, to more in the community, doing outpatient types of things. More focused now on wellness, dementia-related issues. Worked, have worked at the hospital in various, at Day Kimball Healthcare for, in various roles. My current role there is actually with their hospice and palliative care department. That's where I've been currently working. Over the course of my career, I have immensely enjoyed my opportunities providing patient, family, caregiver education. And offering staff members educational offerings or in-service or what have you. That's something I've really enjoyed. And when I was approached about this opportunity and if I would consider or have an interest in this position, actually, I was very interested, obviously, in here. Mainly because I spent so much time in, in working with seniors, I think that this would be a great change of pace for me. I've always, I've always wanted to be able to give back to our community, to give back to my community. Specifically, I've worked with the hospital, and this is a great opportunity now to give back with Woodstock. I consider this an opportunity for personal growth and for adding more balance to my, to my current interests. So, that's, questions?
Ladies and gentlemen, questions for Angela?
I know there's a question.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes.
Maybe a couple.
Sure.
First of all, I commend you on what you've been doing, having, having firsthand experience with palliative care and, you know, relatives, people like you are special. And so, let me say that for anything else. You know, when I started on this board, part of the reason I got on, attempted to get on was because I always kind of thought I wanted to be a teacher. You don't do anything like that here.
Right.
Or anything but.
Right.
And really what this requires is a tremendous amount of work and commitment. To missing no meetings and missing no committees and volunteering for a lot of committees. Are you comfortable with the time, or do you have, do you have an idea of how much time is required?
I have an idea, Mike and I have discussed that. I have an idea of the time required, not only just for the, the board meeting itself, but then the subcommittees and depending on how you get involved with subcommittees. That's going to, that's going to, your time required is going to depend on how much you're involved with different subcommittees. So I'm aware of that. I'm no stranger to volunteering my personal hours to things. I do that quite often, actually. Because in my, well, working with seniors and the type of things that I like to see happen in our, in our community, that stuff doesn't get reimbursed. And so, I do a lot of volunteering of my hours, and thankfully, my husband's okay with that. So, I'm not a stranger to that. And the one thing that I forgot to mention when I was speaking to the RTC last week, and that I forgot to mention when I just introduced myself, is that something I want everybody to know about me is that I'm, when I take something on, I'm very enthusiastic about it. And I don't claim to know everything, I don't claim to have experience in everything. And frankly, making those kinds of statements for me makes me a little uncomfortable. I am in the process of perpetually learning. So, if I don't know something, I look at the resources, I try to figure it out, and I ask my peers. But I guess, I, what I want to say is that generally, when I take something off, I'm very enthusiastic about it. I'd like to do a good job and do what I feel is the right job. The other thing is, that I also feel is important, is while I don't have as much experience as some of the other candidates do, is that I'm a big picture person, I'm very good with logistics and trying to figure things out and how things should work. Take it from what it's worth, think about how that might contribute to the board, but I'm a big picture person, a logistics person, can handle a lot of the work.
So based on that, if you start to serve on the board at the next meeting, what would you hope that a year from now, when the elections happen? What would you have, what would you hope that we can look back on it? Because you were here, something got done, or something that you were passionate about. What, what would be your take?
Well, quite honestly, and this, the board is new to me, I've been reviewing minutes online, I've been reviewing policies online to become more familiar with it. Honestly, the thing that, something that strikes, strikes kind of near to me is the nutritional programs in schools. And not just nutritional programs in schools, but also kind of the way kids are, have their positive reinforcement, from whatever angle, come, whether it's from parents or from school officials, whoever. And I may keep this very brief, but to give you an idea of where I'm coming from, is we don't have children at the moment. I do have a nephew, he is type 1 diabetic, he was diagnosed two years ago. And it was eye-opening when he was diagnosed, he was starting in first grade, and it was eye-opening just how, how many maybe unhealthier choices are all around him in his own school system. Now, he's not in Woodstock, so I obviously cannot speak for Woodstock. But that's something that kind of struck me, and there was a lot of, there's, there's currently a lot of positive reinforcement with ice cream parties, cupcakes, stuff that's coming to school every other day, every three days. But then also looking at the school's meal plans, you know, the lunches, obviously, there's a breakfast program or afternoon program. But that's something that's, that's near to me, just because I think that, obviously, with his, with him being type 1, it's a much more serious issue. But it just was very eye-opening. So that's, looking at the nutritional programs and wellness in general is of interest.
Have you been to board meetings before?
No, I've not been.
So you haven't seen how it operates?
So, like I said, I've reviewed, I, I've started to review minutes online to get a sense of, I've looked at the different subcommittees minutes, I mean, sort of a few times back. So I'm trying to get a sense of how that works.
Thank you.
I tend to ask everybody the same question. So what skills and experience do you bring that you think make yourself the ideal candidate?
Okay, well, I've probably listed a couple of them already. I, I am very analytical, again, I am big picture, I like to look at the logistical approach to things. I feel that I'm very organized and I'm honest. So if I don't understand something, I might ask you the question a couple of times. I don't make assumptions that I know something. I think that that's very helpful. And again, just enthusiastic in what I do, I put myself into what I do. That's how I feel I'm qualified.
Yes, Stephen, Julie?
Some more good questions.
Thank you, that's all. Next on our list, Marshall, Marshall Turlot. I have some resumes of Marshall, if anybody would like one.
I'm Marshall Turlot, thank you. And I have been a resident of the town of Woodstock for 45 years. I'm a career educator, I began as a teacher at Litchfield, and was invited to work at Woodstock Academy after my first year in Litchfield. Came here as a, as a teacher for two years, and was invited to become a counselor. The academy actually, Board of Trustees actually helped pay for my graduate studies to have me become their counselor. And I had the pleasure of building the first comprehensive counseling program at the academy back in the 60s. I was also the people personnel director, so I was given the responsibility of developing special ed programs at Woodstock Academy. Back in the days when there wasn't a law to have the three endowed corporate academies have to have special ed. But we established one before the law went into effect. I served there for 34 years, was twice invited to be headmaster, wisely turned it down. I thoroughly enjoyed the counseling career, when I retired in 2001, I wasn't tired, and so I opened my own practice, which I continue to have. That's an extra row here on Woodstock. Two years into my practice, I was invited by various schools to do some consulting. And I went into doing that. I, I did take on a project 10 years ago at Killingley, where they had, for various unsungary reasons, an excessive number of students that would be suspended and expelled. And they needed a program that would respond to that, so the kids weren't just out of school. So I developed that program, they asked me to stay on as the behavioral counselor for a year, and 10 years later, I'm still there, part-time, doing the counseling in that program, which by the way, has been recognized as a model program at the State of Manhattan. I thoroughly enjoyed my work, or I would still be doing it in 12, 10, 11 years since I retired. My civic responsibilities I've taken on, I was the chair for the regional advisory committee at the Columbia Valley Community College. I also chaired the hospice committee at Day Kimball for about six years. And in fact, received the national award for the hospital for that service, for the hospice program. And outside of that, I've never been, obviously, involved in Board of Trustees or Board of Education. I've always been on the other side of the table. But when this opportunity came forward, I thought I'd been away from civic responsibilities for a few years. And I thought I'd be happy to step forward and see what I could bring to assist them.
Questions for Marshall, guys?
As you were talking, you answered them, I thought I was going to. I don't know how you saw my question, but. I think you've answered all my questions.
So I'm going to ask the same question to anyone, there are a lot of answers to them, but I always ask the same questions. What skills and experience do you have that make you particularly qualified for this? We've got a lot of impressive candidates tonight, what makes you shine above the rest?
Well, I'm not sure that I do, because I'm not sure of what you do, everyone. Like I said, I've always been on the other side of the table. Obviously, my, my background is as an educator first. I, I think that alone brings a lot to the table. Secondly, I've been involved in human services all my life, in one way or another, if you look at your resume. And certainly chaired committees and boards. I think what I bring is an open mind, no particular bent on what I would like to see done. I come here to serve and to volunteer, see it as a civic responsibility, and I'm a problem solver. I'm a people person, interested in school, kids, teachers, the community, administrators. I'm here to serve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stephen, Julie? Thank you, Marshall. Last but not least, Michelle?
Michelle Roden, City Lieutenant, 14, Andrew, Woodstock. I am currently a stay-at-home mother, I am an attorney by training. I haven't worked in my profession since my son was about four, four years old. When I decided it was time to kind of refocus my life and pay more attention to my family than my career. So I decided to stay home, and I am privileged to stay home, I have a lot of time on my hands. So with that time, I do a lot of community service, a lot of community volunteering. Since my son's been at, in the Woodstock public schools, I have volunteered into the classroom. I have donated a library to his first grade classroom through personal donations. I was the PTO president for two years, during which time, as the co-president, not the president. During which time, we raised close to $60,000, which is used for Woodstock public schools. And during that time, I also looked at the PTO and streamlined it a little bit, made it a little bit more profitable. After that, I took about a year off from being on in boards, but I'm currently on the Education Foundation, I'm the director on the board for the Education Foundation. I was on the indoor equality committee at school, trying to think what else I've done. I volunteered for Girl Power, which is an after-school program at the middle school. And I don't have a daughter, and didn't have the time having children at the middle school. So I'm telling you all this just to show you that I am very passionate about education in our community, in trying to make a difference, in making incremental, even if they're small, improvements to what our schools already have to offer. And that, that is why, when the seats opened up, I expressed my interest.
I know Michelle, three of them, I don't have any questions for her.
Don't ask me the question again, I'll just answer it, I won't make you hear your questions. I think the thing that, I think everybody's, you know, it's something just to step forward and come, put yourself out there to even be considered for this candidate. It's such a commitment, a time commitment, it's sort of on any board. And so, I think the thing that differentiates me from the other candidates, however, is that I, I think I'm more abrussed to the current situation and what is going on at the board level. I attend a lot of meetings, I, I'm very in touch with what's going on at school and what has been going on with the board for the last two, three, four years. So I think that gives me a little bit of, a little bit of different experience from the other candidates. I also think it's, my background as an attorney helps, it helps to, you know, navigate the whole board policy and procedures, which can sometimes, sometimes feel daunting and take a little while to get up to speed on.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome, thank you.
Stephen, Julie, any questions? I'd just like to thank the four candidates, thank you very much. It's, it's, as Michelle said, it's putting yourself out there is always interesting and fun, and it gets fun every day. What I'd like to do is open it up to citizens' participation, as you said, I'm allowed to do that.
Sure, me too.
Comments, suggestions, anyone like to say anything on behalf of any candidate?
Mike, I know two of the candidates pretty well, and it was, and very much appreciate the other two stepping forward as well. One reason why citizens are here tonight is to understand the board's priorities in, in the selection that they'll make. So my request would be to the board to please share that with the community. We don't have the opportunity here to elect new board members. We, you are our proxy, and I think it's fair to the voters of the town that you clearly articulate the characteristics that you're looking for and those that you value in the, in the candidates that you select.
Well, I think what we have here are four candidates that are very good candidates, I think each one is qualified in their own way. I feel that we, we have a wide spectrum. I think we can fill this position with, with different avenues and different ways to look at the board. Personally, as, also, I'm, I have to look at it, well, I don't have to, but I do a little bit, and look at it, as a Republican leader in the town, you might say, they are Republican seats, I look at the, the future electability of these people, maybe what's the possibility that we elect in the future? Because we do have an election coming up in November, we have five seats I think that are open. I look at that also. We put it, put it out there, there were a couple more candidates that did come up, but kind of backed out at the end. They would have come forward if we needed or wanted them to, we could have had more, but I kind of, we kind of said thank you. And maybe they'll come up fourth next year for November's election, I'm not sure yet. But I, I think there was a couple more that were more interested. The four of you that sit here now are the ones who came forward, and we interviewed. And like I say, everyone here sat in front of the Woodstock Republican Town Committee.
Mike, I just want to add a point to what you said. Recognizing that the policy of the board is to replace any positions with a member of the Republican Party, we have two Republican positions. But I think most of us have had these conversations either in front of everybody, or, or, you know, whether it be in a caucus or not, that very little goes on in this board that I've seen that is directly on party line, very little. Any policies, any policies we put together, whether it be the policy committee, or, or any, any moves that we've made, rarely, rarely fall on party lines.
I agree with you 100%, I think you and I see more eye to eye than some others.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Except for this little issue that we have here, that's become more political than anything.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And so, my, my point, I guess, the counterpoint to what you just said, I know, you know, you're, you are a leader in the Republican Party. And, you know, that leaves two of us here who are not Republicans at the table. Because one has been out of the state for a long period of time. So here we are, recognizing that by policy, we must fill that with a Republican. So what I look to is making sure that we find the best possible Republican, ooh, there, clearly there are many, I'm sure there are four right here. The best possible Republican. And for me, the only way I know how to do that is through personal experience. I'm not sitting in on the RTC meetings, I didn't sit through on the interviews, and I didn't, I don't know what magical things went on that people learned to understand, things that we won't see in this short conversation. So for me, I have to look to the most information we have here and personal experience and understanding the qualities of what we believe are, are going to make a good board member. So, you know, you know what, everybody's known it from the last couple of meetings, that I'm against having either of the town committees lead us into a place, other than, the vetting process is fine, it's fine. So I, I just want to make it clear that as we go forward, I would only ask each of you to kind of look deep inside yourselves and just make sure, you're 100% sure we've chosen the most capable two people. And the most capable two Republicans to fill the seats. The ones we know the most about, the ones we know will do a good job. We know how hard it is when people don't show up, and we know how hard it is when they, when, when they don't do the work. And so, that's all I ask my fellow board members.
Yes?
Hi, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. One.
Would you, would you?
Yes, Tara Murphy.
I'm sorry, I was talking, you're in here.
Tara Murphy.
Tara Murphy, thank you.
Sorry. There's just a couple of points I wanted to, to mention. With being Republican seats, I understand that the RTC has made a couple of recommendations. I would very much, I as a Republican, let me say, very much would encourage that the best candidate, regardless of the recommendation of the RTC, that the best candidate with the most experience that applies to this position be on this board. the most experience that applies to this position be on this board. And so what I'm trying to say is that, I'm looking and hearing, you know, all the candidates speak, and there's a couple that really, really stick out to me that can really make a difference and be a huge asset on this board. And I think that what needs to be done is to look at those assets, look at the background experience. Invaluable experience to have an attorney on your board that would be very knowledgeable and benefit the board, because they know about state statutes, they know about different laws, there's a lot of things that are involved with the Board of Education, you know, State Department of Ed, all kinds of statutes that the board has to follow, the school has to follow. And to have somebody that's involved in the school system is just so valuable, somebody that's been in both school systems, people with educational backgrounds as well, it's so very important to have somebody that is a presence at the school, has that experience and can relate to that. One other point is that if someone is nominated to this board that doesn't have the background in being involved with the school or state statutes and other roles, doesn't attend meetings, things like that, or doesn't have the ability very often, there will be a huge transition that the board is going to have to make with that individual or individuals to be able to transition someone and educate them about the process, about what takes place at meetings, about what needs to be done and the amount of work that needs to be done. So again, just please, I encourage you to pick the best candidate based on, you know, information that you have, resumes, and the experience that they have that directly relates to the roles and responsibilities of being a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Bluegus. First of all, I really wanna thank folks who showed up tonight and put themselves forward as candidates. I've been there, I'm a bit flattered, and sure, you're gonna go disappointed, it may not be the two that you think, but it's, I know what that feels like, and I really appreciate that. That's really stepping forward and doing something for the community, and I wanna thank you, I really mean that. I wanna echo what other people have said, is that I hope the board will choose us, two best candidates for the position. And really, as a parent with two children in the system, they're gonna be in the system for a while, that's so important. The decisions you guys are gonna be making are huge in the coming years, with some of the changes that are coming nationally and in the state regarding school hours, technology and role that's gonna play in teaching. You guys have some big balls that are gonna be juggling around over the next few years, so think about that, even though these positions may not, may still have to go through an election cycle, you know that it's important to get an incumbent in there that really knows and understands and cares about that. I think everybody here cares about it tonight, I think others have, but some people are gonna be up and running quicker. So I hope that you will make the right choice in your heart to do the right thing. And finally, I do think, since I am on the floor for a second, I do have to say that we've seen, I think it's the third board now in the past year that's kind of been replaced. We've also seen members that aren't around, aren't gonna be around for a while. You need to look, and anybody who's coming in tonight, needs to really look critically at the way the board runs. You can't have people with extended absences. You can't have, quite frankly, I think you need to really look at the fact that unaffiliated candidates are not able to be put forward tonight, unless they're put forward by the party. I think there needs to be kind of a really refreshing of your bylaws, of the way you operate, and really bring it a little bit more up to date. You know, there's two thousand people in Woodstock approximately that are unaffiliated. Sure, I could've signed up and gone downtown and signed up as a Republican run, and then next time it was Democratic, hoping you'd done that. But that's not really what we're here for. We're here for the good of the kids and the families, and there needs to be some sort of way to work that around. I understand political realities, I understand this is a two-party system right now, but we need to really be a little more open to try to look at that. And, you know, whoever gets on the board tonight, I'd just say, you know, I know when I was running, I was prepared to change my life about a hundred eighty degrees to make it work. You're gonna have to do that, probably, more than you imagined, so be prepared for that, make sure that that's a commitment to make. And thank you again for stepping forward, I really appreciate it as a parent, with kids in the school system, I really appreciate it. And thank you to you guys for, I know you're gonna do the right thing. So thanks.
Thank you, John. I'd just like to say one thing, that I agree with your position on tardiness and absenteeism. I don't like it, I'm not one that does. I think there's a few of us that have been on this board, have been to every meeting, always here, I'm here early, I agree with you a hundred percent. Little we can do, though. There's something we can do, you know, with a sign of asking for resignation, there's not much more that we can do as an elected person on the board. I don't have to come, basically, I mean, I think we had someone like that at Water Finance, went to one meeting and never showed up.
I don't wanna get on the side of...
I, I, I just want to...
But, um, where do bylaws come from? Where do the rules for board come from? Does the board unset?
That part, no. You can't, that's statutory, you can't, you can't remove somebody from office who's been elected in.
They have to resign.
They have to resign, or they have to move and register somewhere, as we've seen.
But you can ask for the resignation.
We can't.
You can.
We're getting off base, because as you know, that's one of my pet peeves, and I will be looking into that. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming tonight, our four candidates, thank you very much. It is a big step, it's a one-year position. If you're interested, you'd have to run again next November, that's always fun. As I sit now, do I have anything else from the candidates?
Mr. Cherry, a lot of reflection went into seeking this position, and after hearing people tonight, I wanna make your decision a little easier. I think that the most qualified, my opinion, my humble opinion, the most qualified people are sitting on either side of the, and that's with all due respect to Angela. I'd like to withdraw right now, I would ask if you support Marshall and Michelle for this office. I think that they have the most time to put in, I think that they have the experience and the abilities, and I would urge you to get behind these two candidates.
Thank you, Stephen. That's it, I open the floor for nominations.
Excuse me a minute. Because the Republican Town Committee, we haven't made a public notice of who was in the...
I don't have the...
I don't have it here with me, but...
The...
You can announce it.
The Woodstock Republican Town Committee had endorsed Angela and Marshall. This is a letter to everyone to all the Board of Education members, signed by Jeff Gordon, the chairman of the Woodstock Republican Town Committee, Angela and Marshall.
Mike, I'd like to make the first nomination, if I could. I'd like to nominate Michelle Woz.
All right, second, Mike. Okay, so Dr. Byrne, can you run us through the rules again?
Nominate individuals singly, and you have to record your vote on each one. If one or two candidates get a majority, three of the five of you sitting here, then those candidates are elected, and you need not go on to the third. You can't, if you choose two, there's no need going on to the third.
So is there discussion?
Well, I think we keep the nomination process going, right? Is that what we're...
I'm sorry, what?
Do we keep nominating them?
Well, no, now I think you need to...
Need to go?
Yeah.
Handle each one individually?
Right, so I have second from Michelle, all in favor? Two.
Chief.
Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Marshall Turlow.
Second. All in favor?
One, one, I don't know. Love seven.
Second.
All in favor, yes.
Unanimous.
Kavanaugh, yes?
Yes, I'm yes.
So it's unanimous?
Unanimous, yeah.
Okay.
I would nominate Angela Schenner.
Second.
Second was, I'm sorry.
Second was Steve.
Steve.
All in favor?
That's good.
All in favor?
One.
Let's make sure that, do you have a question?
I wanna finish the motion.
Well, the motion was simply to nominate Angela?
Right, right. I want, you said, how many, you said yes, I didn't...
The yeses were Mrs. Woodland?
Just, no, just give me a number.
Three.
Thank you. Is this far as you've gone?
Right.
Now I have...
You should ask her, opposed or abstained.
Opposed, abstained, I'm sorry.
Opposed, opposed, two opposeds.
Okay, good, done.
Okay, so I have Michelle with two, Angela with three, and Marshall unanimous.
So you didn't fill out the Michelle ones either, so you guys opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, I'm gonna abstain this one.
Abstained, abstained, three abstained.
So she won then?
Why'd she win? There's no no votes.
Oh, okay. There's no no votes.
Yes, except all... You had, you had three in favor. You had at least three in favor.
That's why you gotta call them, I was abstaining.
Two, no, after abstain.
Guys, you guys gotta be careful with your votes. Julie, hold on a second. We need to go back and do the nomination of Michelle Woz, because no abstentions were not recorded.
Yeah, abstentions, if count as no's, if you had three abstentions...
No, they go with the majority. Abstentions go with the majority.
So, okay.
You guys be careful.
Cliff?
I'm yes.
No, nominate?
I've nominated Michelle, second.
Okay, wait, we're just gonna go back and... Okay, let me, just go slow, okay? I got you and you nominated Michelle. I have two yeses, how many abstained?
We did not record the abstains, that's why we're going through the nomination again.
All right, go ahead.
And in this case, Mr. Davis is nominating.
Yes, got it.
And Ford seconded?
Yes, that's what I have, right?
All in favor?
One, two.
Two.
We got it.
Opposed.
Three.
Okay. Right, that's what you're saying, okay. Cause I did want to have mine.
I know, so I'm gonna think of...
Thank you, sir.
So you have to go, you have to recreate the whole thing, right?
We're done, that one's good. Next one?
I'm sorry, I have Angela Marshall, congratulations. If you can just, I'll adjourn in a second, just come by here, talk to you a minute. Thank you, adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Julie?
Motion to adjourn, second by Kevin.
Seven forty-eight. And then, most of the time it was by Steve, second was by Kevin.
And you can see a abstention, except in, except in a motion, right?
It was a motion too, abstention goes, abstention goes with the majority.
Abstention goes with the majority.
Yep. So we have two yeses and three abstains.
Obviously.
Yeah, but we're...
Congratulations. I was trying to, I was trying to read it from the side, and I...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hope you work on mine. The Policy Committee...
That's now a misfortune.
No.
I was gonna call it up, because you yourself, because I don't think you were president when we were vetting, one of the things, it's like, you're a individual. I was, I was... I would not be welcomed back after a...
I need to, two folks here to introduce them to the paperwork.
And then you must, and then to tell them where to go to get sworn in, right? They gotta get sworn in.
Yeah.
Thanks. See you the best.